Time I'd like to call the pastor of Concord Baptist Church, David Harrison. He's going to lead us in prayer and then after that, his daughter Nora is going to lead us in the pledge.
Hey, would you pray with me? Father, we love you and we thank you so much for your grace, for your goodness that just shines upon us. We ask you, Lord, as we look into the future of this city, that all the administration, that the leaders of this city would focus upon you, Jesus Christ, that you would lead them, that your mercy would shine upon them. Lord, you tell us in the book of Habakkuk that in this great time of many falling away from you, that when we cry out to you for your mercy, we shall receive it. And so, Lord, as our eyes are focused upon so much in these days and times and there's chaos around us, may we remember that the calm is in you, Jesus Christ, that you are reaching your arms out to us at all times and you're comforting us and you're leading us. And so, God, protect our, all of our leaders, protect our police, our sheriffs, everyone that is in our city that keeps us safe and leads us in the right direction. But may we always be seeking you, Jesus Christ, in all things and God, as you do that. We know your favor is going to reign upon us. We know that your hand of protection will be over this city and we thank you for it. In Jesus' most holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much, the Harrison family. All righty, now I'll call on the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox. Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lomburger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Handy.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
All righty, item five, awards and recognitions. Hopkinsville Water and Environment Authority, would please come on down, Mr. Lancaster and Ms. Nikki Chambers.
Good afternoon. Thank you all, mayor and city council members, for allowing me to come brag on some of our fantastic employees. I'm filling in for Derek Watson. I am the director of water for HWA. Nikki is our supervisor of our water treatment plant. And most water professionals prefer to stay out of the spotlight and just do their work. And so, it's an honor for me to have a few of our coworkers in attendance and I'd like to just kind of recognize them individually. Nikki Chambers is our supervisor of our water plant with 28 years of experience. Started as a co-op student and she has a class four water treatment license, which is the highest that the state will let you have. David Blaine is our director of engineering, construction and distribution and he has over 30 years of experience. Shandra Henderson is our lab analyst at the Moss Water Treatment Plant. She has nine years' experience and she also has a class four water treatment operator. Charlie Lane is our chief operator at the water treatment plant. He's been with HWA 17 years. And Josh Knight is our safety and risk management officer. He's been with HWA seven years, so thank you all. I've got four awards that we've recently won that I'm proud to share with you. This first slide is just, we just give you an overview of what we do. We treat a lot of water and we treat a lot of water that goes into the river as well. Next slide, our first award is the Kentucky Water and Wastewater Operators Association Western Chapter Water Treatment Plan of the Year that we won for last year for our excellence in water quality and advancements in technology. Next slide, please. Here is a state award from the Kentucky and Tennessee American Water and Works Association. We received this award at the Water Professionals Conference back in September. This award is given to one medium water treatment facility in Kentucky. It's based on outstanding water quality, operational records, maintenance professionalism and the use of innovative technology. We've been a finalist for the past few years, but this is the first year we've won that since 1997. That's Nikki Chambers proudly accepting that award for us. The next two awards are safety-related. This is our governor's safety award that we won this year. We won this award based on how many hours that we went without a major accident, a lost time accident where an employee was not able to come back to works last year. In the several years, we've totaled up to 700, over 600,000 hours of safe work without any major accidents. And this award here is a national award, so this is the Wendell Ladoo Safety Award. This is presented to us by the American Water Works Association. Out of all Class II water utilities, that's any water utility, from 10 to 100 employees in the whole nation. So, we also received this award at the Water Professionals Conference in Louisville in September. So, thank you all to the HWA staff for representing our community the way you do, earning us a reputation in the state as a leader in the water industry. And thank you, mayor and council members, for giving me a few minutes to brag on these folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster, for all y'all do with the water department. Y'all make everything look easy. Y'all do a very great job of what you do and make it, we having safe and clean drinking water and we appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you. All righty, now we get to move into item six, public comments. If anyone out there would like to come to the podium and tell us what's on your mind about what's going on, please come up and we'll have a talk. Anyone like to speak? Okay, all righty, mayor's comments. Let's move right along with that. All righty, I'd like to say thank you to CDS, Holly Bogus and them for the Farm-to-Table Dinner. It was a huge success this last Friday night. Tom, your crew done a great job. Excellent down there. Appreciate that. KLC turnout was a great trip up to KLC. We all learned a lot, had a lot of fun. Met JD and him with the KLC team and had a lot of interesting things to learn in seminars we went through. The Alhambres, the Eagles Tribute Band was a great thing at the Alhambra on Saturday night. We had a lot of people there. Well, it was a packed house. It was a lot of fun. Thanks to them over there, Mr. Prem and them took care of everything at the Alhambra. Like for everyone to remember, the Half Marathon on the 19th, starting downtown here. Toby and them with Parks and Rec will be kicking it off right out in front of the municipal building. We had a great evening over at Town Hall Meeting at the East Side. The first one was tonight. The next one will be on the 28th at the Boys and Girls Club with Ardo Owens and them over there at Dertz Avenue. Tomorrow, we have a key presentation at 117 Lynn Street for a house that we're going to give away the keys to, that's been remodeled. Then we have Arbor Day Tree Planning and Proclamation on 10/14 at 1:30 at the North Drive Greenway Trailhead. And Mike Perry and them at Public Works are doing all this and we'll be there. And I would like to say happy birthday to Councilman Natasha Francis. Happy birthday, ma'am. All righty, and now we will move into item eight, reports from officers, committees and guest speakers. Ascend Elements and Bond Report. Mr. Mark Franklin.
Good evening. My name is Mark Franklin. I'm with the Louisville Firm of Dinsmore and Shoal. I serve as bond counsel to the city, so some of you may remember me from previous meetings. And I was on Zoom about a month ago when we adopted the reimbursement resolution for Ascend. With me, Roger Lynn, who's also, who's with Ascend, Government Relations. We wanted to respect, with respect for this bond issue, the council's practice of having sort of a work session, opportunity to ask questions and talk about the bonds before we presented an ordinance to the city to approve the bond issue. So, trying to respect the city's normal practice of having an opportunity to ask questions before being presented, you know, an ordinance for approval and consideration. So, we're attempting to do that tonight. I wanted to just kind of, kind of, big picture, talk about the bonds just for a moment or two, just to refresh everyone's memory. The reason Ascend is here is that, of course, it has, in the course of fundraising, cash for its facility here. Its investment advisor slash investment banker Goldman Sachs, you know, realized that the recycling component of what they do is eligible for tax exempt financing. And, you know, once you become, once you realize tax exempt financing is an option for you, that automatically really becomes your cheapest way of borrowing most of the time. And so, Ascend decided to pursue tax exempt financing, much like the city does for its own needs. It's oftentimes the cheapest way to get to borrow. And so, they decided to pursue this financing. Now, the type of bonds Ascend is pursuing are called exempt facility bonds. They're exempt from federal income tax, just like the city's on borrowings, but they're in a special class. In other words, the amount of money they borrow, you know, this year or next year, does not impact the city's on borrowings. As you may know, the city has federal tax limits that apply to its own borrowings that carefully manages in order to achieve the best outcome for its own borrowings. There's a separate tax limit called volume cap that applies to this element of, or category of bonds that is actually managed by the Commonwealth on behalf of these types of programs. And for this calendar year, for 2024, there's $76.3 million of volume cap remaining that Ascend is eligible for and we've applied to receive that. And we will meet with the statewide committee that administers that on October 15th. And we are the only applicant, so we expect to receive it. So, we will have until December 15th to get the bonds closed for this calendar year. So, we would expect, I've worked with Doug, the city attorney, to, our plan is to hope to have the ordinance for first and second reading. It's your October 15th and 17th meetings, but I will say there's a chance it could slide into November if it has to, just based on the deal calendar and all the things we're trying to get accomplished with respect to the bonds, if that's okay. The bonds will not be payable with the monies of the city. My job as your bond counsel is to make sure that's, you know, clearly stated everywhere it can be and will be in the bond documents. That's, you know, it wouldn't be right otherwise. That's part of my job. And that's true both by what the documents say and also by state law. That's actually in the statutes that govern these types of bonds. And the bond documents will contain other types of protections for the city, such as indemnification and other things that it should receive. And it's part of my job to make sure those elements will be there. That's all I really wanted to cover, but I'm happy to answer any questions from a financing standpoint. And I'm happy to let Roger answer any questions about the company or the project itself.
Any questions for Mr. Franklin? Okay, looks like you got it all covered right there.
Okay, well, good. Well, that's good.
Thank y'all very much for being up here this evening.
All right, thank you for having us.
Thank you. All right, we will move into item nine now, approval of minutes. But you do have a revised version of the minutes in front of you. Brittany said we had to change one thing. Just one second, under medical cannabis. She changed the, had a little tight area there. We got it all taken care of, but we want to let you know that under medical cannabis. All right, now, Ms. Francis.
So, we're good?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Natasha and Amy, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, moving into item 10, ordinances. Ordinance A 28-2024, Old Major Lane Zoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone properties located on Old Major Lane. Whereas, Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution 2024-06 to assign the original zoning designation of R2 Single Family Residential District to properties located on Old Major Lane. And whereas, Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their August 26, 2024 meeting for city council to approve original zoning application R24-8-1. And whereas, City Council concurred said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville-Crispian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.21, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution 2024-06 and recommendation dated August 26, 2024. The properties as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby zoned R2 Single Family Residential District. 170 Old Major Lane, 150 Old Major Lane, 140 Old Major Lane, 130 Old Major Lane and 120 Old Major Lane. Section 2, if any section subsection sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Amy, Jamie, all righty, any discussion? I don't see any discussion. We'll have clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger.
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
Okay, item B, ordinance 29-2024, Small Business Commission, first reading.
An ordinance amending Section 33.272 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to the Small Business Commission. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 33.272 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. 33.272 Meetings Quorum. The commission shall meet on a regular basis, at least monthly, with additional meetings upon the call of the chairman or vice chairman as needed. All meetings shall be held in accordance with requirements of the Kentucky Open Meetings Act. The meetings shall be facilitated by city administration within the discretion of the mayor and city administrator. Seven commission members shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. In any event, any commission member has more than three absences with one year, one calendar year, said member may be removed and replacement appointed to fill the unexpired term at the discretion of the mayor. Section 2, if any section subsection sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Terry, all right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call on clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger.
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
All righty, item C, ordinance 30-2024, Garbage Trash and Weeds, first reading.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 93 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to trash and building material collection. Whereas, the Hopkinsville City Council Committee of the Whole considered a recommendation from the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board to amend Chapter 93 relating to trash and building material collection and add provisions to create a new service and set the rates for said service. And whereas, the Hopkinsville City Council Committee of the Whole referred said amendments to the Hopkinsville City Council. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 93.02(c)(3) of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. 3, except for limbs no more than 2 cubic yards, 6 feet by 3 feet by 3 feet of building material or trash shall be placed at the designated collection point for any regular collection day at owner occupied residential properties. No business landlord or contractor shall place any building material, garbage, limbs or household goods at the designated residential collection site. All contractors are responsible for the disposal of waste, including building material or trash, resulting from the service they provide. A business landlord or contractor may schedule the collection of building material or trash by knuckle boom service scheduled directly with the enterprise. Section 2, Section 93.02(c)(2)(B) of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances hereby amended to add a new section subsection as follows. 7 knuckle boom collection rates. 1/4th truckload minimum fee $75, half truckload $150, 3/4th truckload $225, full truckload $275. Commercial business, any active commercial account with large items exceeding container space may be charged the following knuckle boom service fees. Knuckle boom fees $75. Section 3, if any section subsection sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, any and all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, Jamie, all righty, any discussion about this?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
How is this being or going to be publicized?
We will put it out on city webpages. There will be letting the contractors know when they call in out at the landfill and so on, on that. And Steve, didn't we say we might put a mailer out? I'm not sure if y'all did or not about to the contractor.
I'll talk to Brian and we have a meeting here in a couple of weeks. So, I'm going to talk to them about getting it on our Solid Waste Facebook page and website and all that as well. Because we need to get that out there.
But no, we're going to try to use all the social media we can to get it out there and put it out so.
I mean, I see this being very beneficial. I just think getting to most people.
Oh, I want the biggest bang for the buck on that. You're exactly right. All right, any more discussion? All righty, I'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger.
Yes.
And that does pass on first reading.
All right, we will move into item 11, municipal orders, municipal order 30-2024.
Sorry, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the Hopkinsville Water and Environment Authority to submit a loan application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, KIA, for SRFA 5 Moss Water Treatment Plant, GAC and membrane filtration upgrade, identified as WRIS Project WX2104-7055, KIA loan number F25-008S and the amount of $8 million with loan forgiveness and the amount of $5,256,237 and also to submit and execute the necessary documents in support of the project, including documents required to secure a grant KYW Waters or WIFAA and/or bonding in the amount not to exceed $5,256,237 in order to construct SRFA 4 2MG South Park Industrial Park Tank, identified in WRIS Project WX2104-7013. If said KIA loan application and grant or bonding is approved, necessary documents associated with the loan and the grant and/or bond will be brought back to city council for approval.
All righty, we need a motion?
So moved.
And Matthew, Amy, thank you. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, item B, municipal order 31-2024.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the Hopkinsville Water and Environment Authority to submit a loan application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, KIA, for the Oak Grove Clean Water Plan Expansion and Renovation Project Design Only, identified as WRS Project SX2104-7011 and KIA loan number A25-026 and the amount of $1 million with loan forgiveness and the amount of $417,554 and to submit and execute any necessary documents in support of the project. If said loan application is approved, necessary documents associated with the loan will be brought back to city council for approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Steve and Jamie, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any likewise? All right, item C.
Mayor Knight.
Yes, sir.
On items 11, C and D, I need to recuse myself from both of those. And as you said, we did learn a few things at KLC and I learned it's more appropriate for me to leave the table, so I'll have no vote counted one way or another. Thank you. See you at other.
All right. All righty, municipal order 32-2024.
A municipal order establishing a housing incentive district, authorizing and directing the retention of 80% of any increase in ad valorem taxes due and payable to the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky on real property developed by Harvey Square Multifamily LLC and the housing incentive district for a period of 20 years. Whereas, the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky is authorized to levy and impose ad valorem taxes on all real property located within the city. And whereas, Harvey Square Multifamily LLC Company has proposed to construct a development known as Harvey Square, located in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as provided on the proposed site plan attached here to as Exhibit A. And whereas, said development will be located on approximately 4.5 acres and will include new construction of 76 units. And whereas, said construction will promote economic development, will provide much-needed housing in Hopkinsville-Crispian County and will provide additional revenue to the city through the. city through the collection of occupational license fees and ad valorem tax revenue. And whereas as incentive and inducement for Harvey Square Multifamily LLC and/or its assigns to develop housing and create jobs in Hopkinsville, the city hereby agrees to authorize the company and/or its assigns to retain through a rebate 80% of any increase in ad valorem tax revenue otherwise collected by the city from any increased assessment of the real property owned by company located within the district identified on Exhibit A for a period of 20 years. And whereas the development of Harvey Square provides needed housing and enhances overall economic prosperity in the community. Now therefore be ordered as follows, there is hereby established for the purpose of calculating and rebating the increase in ad valorem tax revenue, a housing incentive district here and after referred to as Harvey Square, the boundaries of which are set forth on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein. Hopkinsville City Council authorizes Harvey Square Multifamily LLC and/or its assigns to retain through a rebate 80% of any increase in ad valorem tax revenue otherwise collected by the city resulting, resulting from any increased assessment after January 1st, 2025, of any real property owned by company and located within the housing incentive district for a period of 20 years. Hopkinsville City Council further states the retention and rebate of ad valorem taxes is authorized and directed herein shall commence upon notification, written notification from the company of final plot approved within the housing incentive district, but shall not commence later than October 1st, 2026. Said incentives shall not apply in the event the company fails to comply with the provisions of the city of Hopkinsville Housing Incentive Policy, fails to comply with the local, state, or federal laws, fails to allow the city or any city agency a required easement, or otherwise fails to comply with the terms herein.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the location of this?
It's going to be behind Patriot Chevrolet.
So this is the one behind Patriot? And is this, is this the standard housing incentive we?
Yes.
We offer? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any more questions? Any more discussion? All right.
JR?
Yes.
Is, is this a tax credit property?
Melissa, is that a tax credit property?
Yes.
Yes, they will be.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we, do you know how about how much this rebate will be over the 20 years? Do you have ballpark?
I think it was about $14,000 a year.
280?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Like discussions. All righty, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Bruce says no. Okay. All righty. Municipal order 33-2024 Legacy Hopkinsville Rental.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby amends municipal order 23-2024 by adopting the attached revised Legacy Hopkinsville Rental Rehabilitation Incentives Program policy. Funding for the Legacy Hopkinsville Rental Rehabilitation Incentives Program will be taken from funds budgeted for the inner city rez program.
Right.
Motion.
Second.
Travis and Don. All righty.
Bruce.
Bruce. Bruce, I'm sorry. Turn up my ear, Nate.
That's okay.
Any discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So are we taking out of any, anything that's already been earmarked for something else, or is this just excess funding that's sitting there?
Melissa?
It was budgeted for the housing incentive program.
Right.
So it was already budgeted in the inner city rez budget.
So you're moving it over to the?
Yeah.
Yes, it was already budgeted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, that's it. Mr. Keel, come back to us. All righty. All righty, item 12 under other, does anybody have any other business to discuss at this time? It's me. Okay.
It's going to be a residence forum tomorrow with recognition of residents' rights and rights, and that's going to take place at Christian County Senior Settlement between 10 and 11:30 tomorrow. So my daughter happens to be directly in West Michigan University facilities, and she taxed me with the joy of passing this information on.
And you said yes, dear, and went right along. All righty. Any other business under other than right now? Okay, we will move into item 13, councilman comments. Any comments?
I do, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I believe October is going to be a good month, so I, I appreciate you, mayor, and everyone that was involved in the east side neighborhood town hall that we had today. So I'm looking forward to see what you guys are developing in October.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilman? Jamie?
I, I know Holly's not here. I don't see her in the crowd, but just a big shout out to Holly Bogus and the Farm to Table event. It was really nice. The food was spectacular, decorations and everything. It was a great job to Holly and her staff and to Tom and CDS. It was just, it was really great, and I enjoyed attending that. So kudos to you guys.
Yes.
One thing I'd like to say, I know we've got a lot of folks from, from HWA, and I know their board rep Jason Bell's out tonight. I do just want to pass on, I think I can speak for, I don't like to speak for everybody, but I'm going to mount your director, Derek Watson's wife lost her mother recently, and I'm pretty sure that's probably why he's not here tonight. And just if you don't mind, pass our condolences on to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Keel. Anything else? Don?
I had a meeting today with the Hopkinsville Christian County Agent Aging Council, and they have, they do, they do a great work, you know, in the multiple county area. And in October, they have their Fall Fish Fry. It's a major fundraiser for them. And so it's coming up on the 24th. It's Thursday, the 24th, from 4:30 to 6:30. And so I just wanted to encourage maybe all of us to participate. And they have actually instituted a ticket sales, and they are inviting all of the city council persons and magistrates to enter into a ticket sales war to help them out. And so there will be a significant award for bragging rights between Christian County and the city of Hopkinsville. And so I would like to again crush Christian County as much as possible, and Hopkinsville win this 100%. So no, just kidding, all of that. Bottom line is, we want to help them out. The cost is $15. And so there, there is going to be a competition for ticket sales. And so they're asking all of us to participate. And so bottom line is, if you want to buy a ticket, I'll go ahead and make an unfair, take unfair advantage since I have this moment, that's, that's ward 3 at h-ky.us. You can order your tickets there. Okay?
There you go.
All right. So thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, appreciate that. Anything else? Anybody else got a comment tonight?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want everyone to keep in their thoughts and prayers, everyone that was affected by the hurricane Helene. You know, we've had some, compared to what that was, we've had small storms and small damage, and we all know how big of a problem and a headache that was for the residents in our city. So please, and if you can donate, there's all kinds of places you can donate to, to help with that. But please keep, keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Well said.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. Now we get to move into item 14, closed session, discussion of economic development proposal, KRS 61.81O1G.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Travis and Amy, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go into closed session.